Let's get going here. Welcome to the Sanford Planted Board Meeting for Wednesday, June second, twenty twenty one. Meeting will come at order. This is called proceeding unless the board specifically votes going to executive session. You have the right to hear everything that's being said. And to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Notify the chair if you are unable to see or hear something. Please know that if any Planted Board members have any potential conflict of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. Full discretion of the chair. Public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project thereafter. The chair asked in front of the project to speak, followed by opponents and those who are neither for or against. We may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that ruin this on civil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc. will not be tolerated. If those behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion will terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another day. In addition, the chair at his discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, our members of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planted Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreline zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since these findings may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks if those attend in the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. When the Planted Board makes its final decision, a consideration by the board must be made at its next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. City's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at nine nineteen Main Street in Sanford. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to see and hear what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, and that brings us to the, uh, roll call.
Here.
John is supposed to be reading off the roll call, so hold on.
Yeah, so now I'll, I'll start with that. Um, Diane Connolly. Um, Johan Slip.
Absent.
Absent. Um, Oliver Jones.
Here.
Uh, Jack McAdam.
Here.
Thomas Morgan.
Here.
Crystal Tenny.
Here.
And Lenny.
Frozen. Okay, so I think that's six and one absent with notice. Okay. And that brings us to the minutes for May nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Um, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. This is Tom.
Second, Jack.
Yeah, Jack, okay, gonna vote?
Excuse me, could I make one suggestion?
Sure.
Um, under the staff absence, you'll see two names, Mark Christos and Sarah Schnell. Uh, those should be deleted from, um, the, uh, the minutes. They were just notes that didn't get taken off.
Okay.
So would, would both of you be willing to amend your motions? To do, you know, to make that correction?
Yes, I will still move to approve them with the, with the change.
You okay with that, Jack?
Yes, I am.
And we need a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Diane Connolly. Johan Slip is absent. Um, Oliver Jones.
I can't vote, I wasn't there.
Okay. And, uh, Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
I was not present at the meeting, therefore I cannot vote.
And Lenny.
Yep.
So the motion passes, uh, John, the motion passes how?
So the motion passes, um, with, uh,
Or.
Or, yeah.
Two were absent.
Three are absent, actually. Oh, yeah, two are absent, one is out.
Yep.
Okay, so under hearings and business, first item. New business, this is file one one nine dash one A, Springville Safe Storage. Care of Steve Bushy of Gorrell Palmer. He has proposed a minor site plan and shoreline zone permit for the construction of three single-story self-storage units. And to amend a lot lines on property owned by J W S Services LLC, care of Lisa Gerard. And located at two eighty-two River Street, tax map lot one nineteen dash one A, and one twenty dash one. Beth, you want to give us some background on this?
Sure. Uh, the applicant is requesting approval for an amended minor site subdivision, minor site plan, and a shoreline zoning permit to construct three single-story self-storage units and amend lot lines on property that's owned by J W S Services LLC and care of Lisa Gerard and located at two eighty-two River Street. Uh, the Site Plan Review Committee did review this project yesterday, and they made a recommendation for approval um, with a number of condi-, well, with a couple of conditions. Um, and, uh, you have a, uh, a memo, um, that included the recommendation from the Site Plan Review Committee in front of you, um, as well as draft findings of fact. Um, Caleb Barassa is here, uh, to, uh, speak on behalf of this project, and I believe that Mark Adler is here. Caleb, could you also introduce other members, um, of your team that are present in the audience? Um, and then make a, uh, brief presentation, um, to the, the board, very brief. Uh, mostly it's for the benefit of the, actually, it doesn't have to be very brief, but it's a brief presentation mostly for the benefit of the public who might be here to testify for the public hearing. And at some point when you're ready, um, uh, put your plan up so that you can have it in front of people before you start describing it.
Right, yeah, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
See here, so share my screen here. Um, yes, uh, thank you. My name is Caleb Barassa. I'm a project engineer with Gold Palmer. Uh, here tonight with me is Mark Adler from Patterson Companies. And, uh, it's just, uh, us two, uh, from our, uh, project team here this evening. Uh, and we'll try to, uh, give you a good brief presentation for you. Uh, this is our project, uh, where we are presenting to you today this evening, uh, and seeking approval from you folks. Uh, it's, uh, located at two eighty-two River Street in, uh, Sanford, Maine. And, uh, what I have in front of me here is just, uh, a Google Earth image of the site with, uh, some rough boundary lines of our, of our project areas shown for you. Uh, let's show you here for orientation. The top of the screen being, uh, north, one on the screen being south. River Street, just to the east of the site where our access is located from, and then here is the Malsum River that flows, uh, from north to south on the west side, hand side. This is our existing site here, and, uh, so as Beth had noted, uh, we're seeking a, uh, minor amended subdivision, shoreline zone permit, and a minor site plan. Our existing site here is, uh, lots, uh, I nineteen dash one A and I twenty dash one. Uh, it existing, uh, conditions it has is a nineteen thousand six hundred square foot building. Uh, it's currently vacant. Two driveway access points, a bit of pavement here. And that's shown on the screen is, uh, existing gravel area and all the other area around the site along the river here, uh, is existing vegetated area. I'll note also that this, uh, blue line that is running through the site as well is, uh, the shoreline zone line. Uh, as we had mentioned, we are seeking a shoreline zone permit, uh, for some of the area, uh, that is located in the shoreline zone. Uh, we had a pre-application meeting, uh, back on March fourth with staff and submitted at the end of March and, uh, have since, uh, been working with staff and the planning department, uh, just to refine our, our application here and so, uh, Beth had mentioned, we had our staff review meeting, uh, yesterday morning, uh, which I think went very well, and, and they provided recommendations for you folks here this evening. I'll move right over to our site plan here. Uh, this is, uh, uh, the project, and now we're, we're kind of shifting our orientation. Now, left-hand side of the screen would be, uh, north, uh, River Street, running north to south along the top of the page. This is east along the top, west on the bottom, and then to the right is the south. Uh, site improvements mainly being, uh, these three story self-storage facility, uh, buildings here. Uh, and associated drive area as well. Uh, with driveway access utilizing the existing driveways here on the two eighty-two River Street site, and also having access to the existing Springville Safe Storage Facility site, the driveway access there. Uh, there is a driveway that will be left, uh, but a fence will be installed as well, so that driveway will not be used for the development. Um, there are not, uh, any utilities other than power that will be extended to, uh, th- these buildings here. Uh, it's a fairly simple, uh, project as far as utilities goes. There's existing, uh, power that will be extended from the, uh, safe storage facility into each of these buildings. Of wall-mounted, uh, lights and, and security lighting. Uh, fencing will be installed around the, here, which is, uh, shown on the north-hand side, and then along the front, uh, just to match the existing safe storage facility. One thing we had mentioned was that we were proposing a, uh, lot line adjustment that's shown on this plan here, uh, where we have this, uh, single crosshatch here with a, uh, property line shown, uh, jutting out there, and that's mainly to, uh, provide, uh, space for, for these buildings here, and we have a cross-access easement, uh, so that, uh, both parties are able to access this, uh, its main drive aisle area here. And, uh, mainly for, um, benefit of the, uh, storage facility here to access this main entrance on the existing, uh, safe storage site. I'll move over to the grading plan that we have. We're, we're hoping to, and our aim with this, uh, drainage scheme that we have is really to utilize existing drainage patterns on the site. Everything generally flowing from east to west, uh, towards the bottom of the page, obviously towards the, uh, uh, the Malsum River there. And, uh, what we'll be doing is, is sheet flowing, uh, some half, some portion of the site here towards the shallow drainage swale, sending it through, uh, an existing buffer. And then, uh, which will eventually get to the river, and then on the, uh, southern portion of, uh, where our project area is, we'll be capturing in, uh, some newly installed hatch basins, which will outlet to a shallow, uh, basin and level spreader area there. And one thing that I kind of glanced over really briefly, uh, with the grading here is that will be outletting to, uh, a buffer, as I call it, here. And so what we're doing as part of the shoreline zone, which was a key piece of, uh, our efforts here, working with staff, was that existing gravel area, I'll switch back to the survey plan. Existing gravel area actually over the, uh, the allowed thresholds for impervious or non-vegetated area on a site within the shoreline zone. And so what we're trying to do with, uh, this development is we, we won't be increasing non-vegetated area within the shoreline zone, or in fact, in all of the site. What we'll be doing is actually just restructuring where the non-vegetated area is actually located within the site itself. And so this was something that we worked closely with, uh, staff and particular code enforcement as well here, and so what we're showing is a, uh, dashed line hatching in here, and I'll switch to the landscape plan. This gray hatch that we have in here, this is mainly the area where we're focusing on our revegetation, uh, in this area. One key piece I'll note is that we have a, uh, the Sanford Sewers District has a sewer, sewer interceptor pipe that runs north to south through the property, through the existing, uh, safe storage facility next door. And so we'll be, uh, planting, uh, just grass in that area. But within the other areas here, as we're showing, uh, we'll be doing a heavy revegetation of, uh, tree seedlings to replace all those that are cut down as part of the, uh, project to relocate or, uh, buildings further away from the river. And, uh, the, the main thought here is really just to provide as much buffering as we can, uh, along the riverfront. Move everything away, in fact, from the river. That, I think that was, uh, that was the main piece there. We had several, several comments from, uh, other staff as well, which I believe, uh, are, are captured in the mail, and, and we had, uh, successfully, uh, we've worked well with staff to, to complete those and satisfy, uh, their needs there. And so, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to the board for, uh, any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing. And I'll ask, does anybody to speak in favor of this application? Use the raise your hand feature as well if you need to in face and, uh, in Zoom. Hey, anybody opposed? I see anybody?
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying anyone.
Okay, is there anybody who is opposed to the application who would like to make a comment? Any general comments, either for, either for or against? Okay, not hearing any, I will close the public hearing. And any comments from the Planted Board?
Mr. Chair, uh, before you go there, if I could just give you one more piece of information.
Sure.
Um, I did receive an email from Andre Broussot this afternoon indicating that the most recent changes on the plans, um, and you may not be seeing them here, but the work that he, that he's been doing with Caleb, um, um, satisfy his remaining concern.
I think that's what I got from the notes when I was reading. I think that was the one issue that stood out for me was the, uh, the issue of the, uh, sewer. Um, any other comments on the Planted Board? Diane, do you, do you have any comments?
It is all, uh, a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Oliver.
Near the River, River Street?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't quite hear you.
Would there be any new vegetation over near River Street?
Uh, we're not proposing any. Uh, along the front of the building here, there is some, uh, small landscape, mainly grassed areas and some other, uh, uh, I believe maybe one, uh, vegetated area with some plant things around the existing sign. But, uh, we aren't proposing anything else along River Street.
And where is the interest into the facility on this map?
Yes, it, it, can you still see my, uh, cursor here?
Yes.
A little bit, so we'll be utilizing this entrance here with, uh, Down East Energy is right next door and the existing, uh, entrance for the safe storage facility.
Okay, I see it now. Thank you.
I have Diane who has a question directed to, uh, Dave Parent.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering if Mr. Parent had any concerns in this area in regards to flooding, considering what happened with the, uh, pages safe storm when all this got flooded before. And if the work that they did on River Street alleviated that problem.
Yeah, so we had concerns, but not with that, Diane. This isn't our wellhead protection zone. Uh, and Caleb was, was very good to work with on that. There's a separate submittal that I'm not, I think is probably in your packet. I believe Molly put it in, where he went through the list and the ordinance of all the questions that need to be answered through the performance standard. Um, and I agreed with all his answers. Uh, they added some things to the plan which may not be on this plan because this was a submitted plan. Um, so I, I was very happy with it. Um, I, I don't know if Matthew Preventure is here, uh, Assistant City Engineer, but I worked with Matthew quite a bit on, on the changes to the, uh, to the stormwater treatment. And, uh, Caleb did a great job on that. Uh, our, I guess our view, myself and, uh, and Matthew Preventure, and I believe Jamie as well, is that this is a very tight site, and they're doing a lot on this site, but they did the work they needed to make it work for everyone. Um, and we were all pretty impressed with, with the, uh, work that Caleb put into this. He alleviated all our concerns. Did a very good job.
Okay, thank you, Dave. If you're good with this, then I am. Thank you.
I have just one quick question. I know Matthew Preventure is with us. The, uh, the city's going to be doing some roadwork down there. Is there any issues with this development?
No, I don't believe there's any changes along, uh, along River Street with the access or anything like that. It's, it's mainly outback. But, uh, yeah, thi- this wouldn't affect, the, the, the proposed development wouldn't affect anything along River Street.
Sounds good. I'm all set. Crystal, are you all set with questions?
I am, thank you.
Tom, Jack?
I'm all set.
All set.
Alrighty, I think we're ready to move on with this, Beth.
Would you like to go through the findings of fact?
Yep. Do that next.
Love to.
Jack, I know we're just waiting for this, right? Well, I have to say that Molly and I worked very hard to try to reduce the number of votes, but unfortunately, there's still going to be fifteen votes on this particular project. So, John, get yourself ready, please. Um, okay, so the first set of category, the first category of combinations is the ones that are not applicable. So they include two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-six sewage disposal, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-seven solid waste, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-three floodplain management, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-four identification of freshwater wetlands, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-six recreation and open spa-, open space areas, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-seven phosphorus impact on Great Pond, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-eight spaghetti lot, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewage disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen solid waste disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen airport encroachment, two seventy dash fifteen D parentheses, small F, and parentheses, uh, protecting archaeological and historic resources. Two seventy dash fifteen, uh, D parentheses, small G, um, uh, commercial fishing activities.
Motion to accept.
Second, Jack.
And roll call vote?
Diane Connolly. And Joe, and Slip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Uh, Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And so it passes, uh, six zero with one absence.
I'll go yes, just for fun.
Lenny, sorry about that.
You're welcome.
John, I've done that more than once.
Sorry, Lenny.
Okay, the next capa-, the next, uh, category is capacity to support the development. Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-two, sufficient water. Um, and the, uh, recommendation is that the standard is, um, in all these cases is met. Um, and I'll read you the explanations as they go along. In this case, the first one is the system has the capacity to support the development. The next one is two seven, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-three, and this is the impact on the existing water supply. Uh, and it's the same explanation. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight water supply. And again, the same explanation, uh, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities. Um, and this is a slightly different explanation, but essentially the same, that other utilities serve the area and shall be extended as necessary as additional development proceeds.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And the vote, Jonathan?
Diane. Sorry, before we vote, I just lost Diane. Um, I don't know if there was a disconnect, but we'll have to skip by her for a second.
Okay, I'll come back to her at the end. Um, Johan Slip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
And Crystal Tenny?
Yes, and I just tried calling Diane back and she's not answering.
Lenny?
Yes.
So do I?
Hi Diane, it's, I lost you.
Oh, she's, she's on now? I will say Diane, if you're on the call and you can hear me, you can always send me a chat message and I will read it aloud for you.
Diane has lost all internet at her house at this time, so she, everything has gone down. How should we proceed?
I think we should just keep going with the meeting and, um, Diane, if Diane can get back in at some point, then she can rejoin the meeting.
And we'll just, we'll just call her absent for that vote, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Diane, you want to keep trying and call me back?
I will, I'll keep trying to get in.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
So the motion pass is five zero with two, um, stains.
Uh, missing.
Two missing.
Yep. Okay, so the next grouping is on erosion control, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-four and two eighty dash sixteen, excuse me, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven. Um, uh, in all of those cases, it re-, it's the standard, it rec-, is recommended that the standard is met and that the explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And the vote?
Johan Slip is not here. Uh, we're still waiting for Diane Connolly. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horn?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, with five zero to absent.
Okay, the next category is vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Um, first is two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-five traffic conditions. Um, the, uh, recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic and is designed to minimize impact. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, oh great, hold on please, it's, it's trying to update my computer. I tell you, this is just going to be a comedy of errors tonight, I'm afraid. We'll just tell it smooth. Okay, um, the second one, um, I think I got stuck in the middle of that, was two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two access to the site. Same recommendation that the standard is met and same explanation. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three access into the site. Um, same recommendation that the standard is met and, um, uh, the same explanation. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four internal vehicular control. Uh, again, the same recommendation, um, and, uh, the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And the vote?
Diane Connolly. Oh, not there.
She's not with us.
Absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horn?
Yep.
So the motion passes five zero, um, to absent.
Okay, the next category is related to shoreline and shoreline areas. The first one is two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-eight, the impact on aesthetic, open space, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access. Uh, the recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that a seventy-five foot wooded setback from the shoreline will be preserved, maintained and improved. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven. Natural features, um, same explanation and recommendation. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven eighteen buffering. Uh, same recommendation that the standard is met and the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And the vote?
Diane Connolly, absent. Joe Handslip, absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Next category is financial and technical capacity, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty. Uh, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen. In both cases, the recommended, uh, recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to complete the proposed subdivision.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And the vote?
Diane Connolly? Still absent. Joe Handslip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Still Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
So the next category is groundwater and I, I slipped in, uh, also the, uh, water quality, uh, in the shoreline. Uh, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-one, impact on water quality and shoreline. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the location of the Public Water Supply Protection District boundaries, um, has been identified on the plan set. The second one is two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-two, impact on groundwater or water quality. Um, recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that all technical revisions described in the superintendent of the water, Stanford, of the Water District memo be addressed to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the Water District, the standard is met. The third one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve. Uh, groundwater protection, uh, the same recommendation that the standard is met with condition and with the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Diane Connolly? Still absent. Joe Handslip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
The next category is stormwater, uh, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-five stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the development will utilize best management practices. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, uh, stormwater management, the, uh, the same recommendation that the standard is met and the same explanation. And then the last one is two seventy dash fifteen D, uh, small C. Um, adequately provide the disposal of all wastewater. And the explanation, the sta- recommendation is again, the standard is met and the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And the vote?
Diane Connolly? Still absent. Joe Handslip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero with two absences.
The next category, shoreland zoning standards, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen shoreline relationship. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that with replacement of trees removed in violation of shoreline zoning standards, proposal shall maintain and preserve environmentally sensitive areas, groundwater, vegetation and natural habitats to the maximum extent. The next one is two seventy dash fifteen D, uh, small A. Uh, will maintain safe and healthful conditions. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with replacement of trees removed in violation of shoreline zoning standards, the proposal shall maintain and preserve environmentally sensitive areas, groundwater, vegetation and natural habitats to the maximum extent. Two eighty, excuse me, two seventy dash fifteen D, small B. Um, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation due to surface water. Um, the, uh, recommendation is that the standard is met with condition with the same explanation as the previous item. Two seventy dash fifteen D, small D. Uh, impact on spawning grounds, fish aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. Same recommendation that it is met with con- the standard is met with condition with the same explanation. Two seventy dash fifteen D, small E. Conserving shore cover and visual, uh, as well as actual points of access. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition and the same explanation. Uh, two seventy dash fifteen D, small H. The same recommendation with regarding the standard and the explanation. Um, and then two fifteen, excuse me, two seventy dash fifteen D, small I. Um, is in conformance with the provisions of two seventy dash thirteen land use standards. The same recommendation that the standard is met with condition and the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Diane Connolly?
No.
Not here. Joe Handslip? Still absent. Um, Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
Um, Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
So the last several are singles. Uh, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-one pollution. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the construction will not generate pollution.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
So we'll move to a vote. Um, Diane Connolly, she's still sitting. Um, Joe Handslip is absent. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the mo-
The next one is two fif- I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
The motion passes five zero with two absences.
Thank you. The next is two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-nine, conformance with other regulations. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in chapter two seventy-five and two eighty.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And we're ready for vote. We don't have to call Joe Handslip's name every time, either word, or Diane's. We'll let you know when Diane comes back, yeah?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Um, so we'll start with Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing your last name correct?
You're, you are, and actually, I was, I was pretty impressed.
Okay. Um, and Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one utilization of the site. Recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is the site is fully developed.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Okay.
So we'll move to a vote. Um, Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that only pedestrians associated with business operations are anticipated onsite and safe access between parking areas and structures will be provided at the final site plan stage.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And the vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion path is five zero with two absences.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting. Uh, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that exterior lighting associated with the proposed development shall be capped, shielded, directed downwards and retained onsite.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal. Hi Diane.
Oh, I heard you pretty well, Diane.
I don't know what's the problem is, so I'm, I'm not coming back for tonight.
Okay. I, that's okay, perfectly understand. I will let the board know.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling back.
All right, bye.
Bye-bye.
We got it.
Sorry.
All right.
So we'll move to a vote?
We're good, John.
Um, Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
And Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
So the last item is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping with the recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is the development is in accordance with shoreline zoning requirements. Wait a minute, this isn't the right explanation, hold on. Um, okay, the app, the development, um, 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 provides of landscaping in compliance with shoreline zoning requirements.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And the vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Are you ready for a draft motion, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sure.
Don't sound so excited. So guys, this is the first time you're going to use the standard conditions of approval. Watch how slick this is.
Slick.
The draft motion is that the planning board accepts the information in the March twenty-fifth, tw- twenty-twenty-one summary report and the June first, twenty-twenty-one site plan review committee recommendation. Grants the requested waivers and finds that the proposed amended minor subdivision, minor site plan and shoreline zone permit application file, number I nineteen dash one A, to construct three single-story self-storage units and amend lot lines, has satisfied the requirements of article, article six of the subdivision ordinance and article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, add a note to the plan set to specify maintenance for the soil filter. B, add a note to the plan set that an OX box switch or an OX box gate be installed. C, locate on the plan set the existing monitoring well on the southern end of the property near River Street. And two, wait for it. Standard conditions of approval number two, three, four, six, seven, eight and nine regarding the required performance guarantee, AutoCAD submission, signed recorded plat, inspection escrow, reconstruction meeting, timing of landscaping and alteration of plans respectively.
Motion to accept, Jack.
Second.
And the vote, call the vote?
Um, Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
Passes five zero with two absences.
Hey, good luck, Caleb and Mark.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Planning Director, are we ready for the next one?
We are ready for the next one.
All right, let me see if I can find the agenda here. Okay, new business. File dash K thirty dash fifty-five. What? What, babe? What's happening?
That's me, I'm sorry, I'm yelling at my cat.
Oh, I thought you were yelling at her.
I'm so sorry. My cat is a suicide mission at this moment. I apologize. I thought I was muted.
Okay. Okay, so file thirty dash fifty-five, this is twelve Roberts Street for TPD Construction. And Chair Stephen Dumont has proposed a finer major subdivision and major site plan for two three-story apartment buildings on property owned by TPD Construction and VBRA Properties LLC, located at twelve Roberts Street. Beth, do you want to help get us oriented?
Sure. Um, this is a final subdivision, my computer has decided to give me a hard time here. There we go. Um, so the applicant is requesting approval for finer majors, final major subdivision and major site plan to redevelop and construct two new three-story market rate apartment buildings on property that is owned by TPD Construction and VBRA Properties LLC, um, and located at, uh, twelve Roberts Street in Sanford. Um, the site plan review committee did review this project yesterday and they made a recommendation for approval with a couple of conditions. Um, and I know that the applicant is here this evening. Um, I'm, oh, 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 I had a brain. Uh, Neil Raposa is going to be here, um, to present on behalf of the applicant and, um, I don't know if, uh, Steve Dumont is also in the audience. Um, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that, um, the applicant make a, a, a presentation before you open the public hearing.
Are we doing a public hearing on this one? Because I thought we closed it.
No, actually, we're not doing a public hearing. You're right.
Okay, so we'll just have a presentation from the, uh, the applicant. They can update us on what has happened, uh, since last time.
For what time? Beth, uh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, my name's Jeff Aliva. I'm with Civil Consultants. Um, Beth, I was able to finish up my, uh, uh, my planning board in Kennybunkport and be able to make it over here, so I sent Neil home and I'm going to take over. So, um, if I can share my screen, uh, what I'd like to do is, um, go over the site plan. And not much has changed since the, um, since the last presentation where we had our preliminary review and approval. Um, what we have here are, are two buildings. Uh, the old Ballenger Auto Building up here on the top of the page is going to be, uh, removed and a new, uh, building here with twenty-four units. And this will be phase two. Uh, on the bottom right of the page, we have another building that will be twelve units and that will be phase one. The reason we're working in two different phases has to do with the moratorium on road closures due to the work on Roberts, uh, Street. And we want to get our utilities and everything kind of squared away on Main Street before that work happens. Um, l- later on, I understand that there's going to be another improvement that's going to happen along that area. Um, we've gone through, uh, technical re- review a couple times, design review on the projects. Uh, we have, I'm going to, um, kind of zoom in on the top of the page and work my way down and around. Both buildings will be sprinkled, protected with a fire alarm. We have access off of, uh, Roberts Street here for our parking lot on this side of the building. We have a vegetated, uh, buffer here that's placed along this, uh, the, the vegetated area that's there now between the roadway that goes into the police department and our parking. And this is help, uh, to help us shield headlights from the budding, uh, residential use that's right over here to the left of the page. Um, as we come down through, we also have an entrance on to the driveway for two ways in and out here for emerg- for emergency access and, and tenant access. We have our ADA accessible, uh, parking over on this side. And then as we come down through, over to, uh, the twelve-unit building, which will be phase one, uh, we have our parking lot here. Uh, parking will be dedicated and assigned to the tenants. We have a situation where we have more than, uh, we have two, uh, spaces per unit in these, uh, in these two-bedroom, uh, apartments. Uh, we have accessway through the town, uh, parking area that's right here across from the restaurant. Uh, we have signs on the, uh, notes on the plan to indicate signage so that residents do not park in the town parking area, um, for that, for those areas. Um, I'm gonna switch, share, and go to, uh, some views of the structure. The first picture that you see here is a representation of the three-story building with the twenty-four units that will be located where the Ballenger Auto Building is. Um, this shows the, um, architectural style with the different colors in siding and textures in siding, uh, with the windows and that main recess, uh, recess, uh, entry on, in the middle of the building. We also have entrance over here along, uh, Roberts Street. And then this, um, kind of rendering doesn't show it because it didn't wanna hide the building, but indicates that a little bit of that vegetated area between the driveway and the structure in the budding property. And I'm gonna switch again and show the phase one twelve-unit building. And this is the, the, um, representation of what the structure is gonna look like. Again, it, uh, this has a pitch roof on it. Uh, we've looked at the drainage onsite, uh, pretty much every, the, both properties are already paved a hundred percent. So, uh, what we're doing here is decreasing the lot coverage a little bit because we do have some green space now, uh, for some vegetation and plantings. Uh, this is the representation of the building, uh, as you come in, um, into the, the parking lot side of it. And I'm gonna, I know I'm going quick because I think you guys have a pretty good, um, agenda tonight. Um, slow me down, tell me to stop. Um, uh, it doesn't bother me. I get yelled at quite a bit, so, um, I think, I think that's it. Yeah.
If I could interrupt very quickly, do you have a rendering of the main street facing side of the building? I know that there's no entrance there, but have you depicted it with the landscaping in front?
I do not have that, um, I believe I have an elevation of that. Um, but I do not have a, uh, a, a rendering, like this three-dimensional rendering that shows that side. Um, but if we look at the, I'm gonna kind of share the site plan again if I can get my buttons correct here. Okay. So you, so you're right, this, this, I think you're talking about this facade here on Main Street Molly. And the main entrance, um, will be, um, right here on, on this side of the structure. And then there's no entrance on here, um, and but, and we have some trees that we're proposing to plant in here, and we have the building stepped back a little bit, uh, to meet, uh, the, I give it some, a little bit pushed off the, the edge of Main Street and the sidewalk. And I guess, I, what I'd like to do is to kind of open it up for, for questions as I kind of search through my files here. Cause I do know that I have, um, some elevations that I'd like to, to share as well. I think that may cover that.
Are there any questions from the planning board?
This is all, I have a question. Uh, what's your plan for snow removal for, uh, the property?
Yeah, so what we do is, um, uh, when, when it becomes a situation where there's too much on site, it gets hauled off.
And my second question was, uh, the colors that you had for the, the, those, those, those are the colors that you're gonna actually go with or that's just a, uh, example?
That, that's the colors we wanna go with.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Jack or Tom, any questions?
So, the phase one, the parking lot, there's no entrance from the parking lot? Do you have to go around to the side of the building? Is that correct?
Well, I'm gonna share the, this, my site plan again, just to forget that. Yep, so we have, we have an en- there, there is a main entrance over here on this, and, um, we have the, the sidewalk that comes in through he- on this side. So, yes, most of the part, people will be coming in off of that, off of the sidewalk into the main entrance of the building.
Hey, Tom, any comments?
I'm all set.
Okay, Crystal?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. I know the design review committee spent a lot of time discussing this, and I think most of the discussion for design review was centered around the building facing Main Street and the, uh, the pitched roof as opposed to the, uh, flat roof. But came up as a suggestion in the process, I think the design review committee kind of decided that the pitched roof was a better, was a better look for Main Street. Um, I just had one question about the, uh, I know, I think there was an issue with parking where the police chief was concerned. Um, does anybody have anything else to offer on that?
I do, I do, I can, I can address some of that. Um, so what we, there, there were concerns with, was a, a couple things. There was, uh, concerns with, uh, potential vandalism, um, for the staff that parks in this public parking spot, parking lot. Um, so what we've done is, uh, we've added a fence line along the backside of here to help reduce the pedestrian traffic from, from the parking lot in between parking lots here. Um, it's a low fence that is gonna match the same style that is around the police de- the police department building. So it ties the whole, uh, neighborhood in. We're also gonna try to do our best to match the existing light poles that are out there. Um, I know that they do not make them anymore, but I think we can get something that's pretty close. Um, and the other comment was the concern with, um, traffic coming through this, um, accessing through here, uh, into the driveway through the town par- uh, parking lot. I think it's also important to note that our design here does not change, alter, or reduce any of the existing parking for the city lot that's right here.
Okay, do any, do the tenants have numbered parking spaces?
Yes, they're gonna be assigned spaces.
Okay. Okay, I'm good. No other comments, questions? I think we can step us up now.
I do have one piece of information that, um, I neglected to bring to your attention. Um, the applicant did ask for a waiver associated with the performance guarantee. Um, I did go to the code enforcement director who interprets that section of the zoning ordinance, which is the same language as what appears in the subdivision ordinance. And in, um, neither provision is the planning board given authority to waive the performance guarantee. Um, the applicant is aware of this and they understand.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we provided a cost estimate to city engineering yesterday. Um, I, I don't, I don't know if Matthew's on the call, um, but he, uh, uh, sent me back an email saying that, that those figures are good, and that's what we'll use for our, uh, determination of guarantees.
Matt, are you still with us?
I am, yep. I received that. I got back to him today. Um, everything checked out. We, we've, uh, we've, we've got the established amount, so once this goes through, we'll, uh, we'll follow that up.
Sounds good. Okay, was there anything else that you wanted to share with us? Uh, Jeff?
Yep, I think, I think that's it. Um, I don't know if Steve has anything more to put in, um, but, uh, no, glad to answer as many questions as you have.
Looks like we got all the questions and comments out of the way. We have our finding of facts of this one?
Yes, we do.
There you go, Jack.
Okay, Jack, hold on. Not as many this time. I didn't, I didn't add them up. Okay, the first category is the not applicable. Um, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-eight, um, aesthetics. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-one, water quality and shoreline. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-two, groundwater quality or quantity. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-three, flood plain. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-four, wetlands. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-six, recreation and open space. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-seven, phosphorus. Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-eight, spaghetti lot. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one, utilization of the site. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven, natural features. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve, groundwater. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen, shoreline. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen, the airport.
Motion to accept.
Second, Jack. And we're ready for the vote?
So I'll start with Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney? We can't hear you.
Maybe if I am muted myself, sorry, yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
The next category is water supply, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-two, sufficient water. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, and the explanation is that with the condition that all comments raised in the superintendent of the Water District's memo are addressed, the standard is met. Uh, the second one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight, the same recommendation and the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a roll call, Vero?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero with two absence.
The next is, uh, erosion control, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-four, soil erosion. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for erosion control. Uh, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven, erosion control with the same recommendation and the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a roll call, Vero?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
The next category is traffic management, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-five, traffic conditions. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic and is designed to minimize impact. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, access to the site, um, with the same, uh, recommended, recommendation and the same explanation. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three, access into the site, um, with the same recommendation and the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero with two absence.
The next category is sewage disposal, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-six, sewage disposal. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, and the explanation is that with the condition that all comments raised in the superintendent of the Sewage District memo be addressed, if standard is met. Um, the second one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine, sewage disposal with the same recommendation and the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Who got that one, Lenny?
Oliver.
Yeah, I give it to Oliver.
I give it to Oliver.
I think we're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Um, Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney? Uh, we, we couldn't hear you.
He's still muted.
So sorry, I'm turning into that person. Um, yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
Next category is solid waste, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-seven, solid waste. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is the system has the capacity to support the development. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen, solid waste disposal. Same recommendation and the same explanation. And then two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven, oops, I don't know how that one, nope, that's fine. Those, just those two.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero with two absence.
So the next category is, uh, financial and technical capacity. Um, the first one is two seventy-five dash ten dash forty. Um, recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is the applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to complete the proposed subdivision. The standard is met. Um, and the second one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen, um, technical and financial capacity with the same recommendation regarding the standard and the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Yeah, we're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Ja- or Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero with two absence.
The next category is stormwater, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-five, um, stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is the development will utilize best management practices. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, um, which is also stormwater management with the same recommendation and the same explanation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
The rest of them are singles, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-one, pollution. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is that construction will not generate pollution.
Motion to accept.
Can you do it?
Second, Oliver.
And we're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
Next one is two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-three, impact on existing water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is that the system has the capacity to support the development.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And we're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenney?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absence.
Next one is two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-nine, conformance with other regulations. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other app- applicable land use regulations outlined in chapter two seventy-five and two eighty.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a vote?
Is for her vote, um, Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four internal vehicular circulation, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that it is clarified that the parking space and walkway within the easement be maintained by the property owner, the standard is met.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Oliver got that one. We're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that other utilities serve the area and shall be extended as necessary as additional development proceeds.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero with two absences.
Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that exterior lighting associated with proposed development shall be cap shielded, directed downward and retained on site.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a vote.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five zero, um, two absences.
The next one is two eighty dash fifteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that adequate landscaping has been proposed and known basis species will be planted as part of the approved landscape plan.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
And a vote.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero, um, with two absences.
So Jack, last one on this one, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen buffering. The recommendation is that the standard is met, the explanation is that adequate buffering will screen the development from surrounding businesses and residents.
Motion to accept. Second, Jack.
Oh.
Wow. This is gonna be a tough one, this is a tough call, I don't know. I think I heard Oliver and Jack at the same time, um. You wanna give it to Jack?
That's right.
Okay.
Let's get this over with.
Jack's ready to get, Jack does not like to finding a fact. Okay, I think we're ready, uh, for a vote.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Don't tell me you found another one. Did we lose your voice, Beth?
It seems like she might have missed audio.
Yeah, I think we lost your audio, Beth. Yeah, I thought you were with us.
What's she doing here?
Yeah, she lost the connection.
I've got her, uh, in the waiting room, so she's coming back in now, um. If she doesn't come back in within a minute and a half, I can pick up the slack for her.
Okay, yeah, we just need the motion.
Yeah. Which. Beth, if you're not on. I'm in the waiting room.
She's back.
No, you're not here. Sorry, I'm in the waiting room.
No, you're not.
You're, you're not, you're not Beth, you're here. Okay, great, and for some reason I can't see you, so I'm gonna have to catch up with you in a few minutes about that. So I do have a, a draft motion for you. Um, the planning board accepts the information in the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one summary report and the June first, twenty twenty-one site plan review committee recommendation. Grants the requested waivers and finds at the proposed major preliminary subdivision and major site plan application file. Number K thirty dash fifty-five to redevelop and construct two new three-story market rate apartment buildings and satisfy the requirement of Article six of the subdivision ordinance. And Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director. Provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, the applicant address all comments raised in the superintendent of the water district's memo. And B, to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the water district. B, to add a note to the plan set to clarify that the parking space and walkway within the easement area will be maintained by the property owner. And provides revised easement language to clarify maintenance arrangements. C, a new sewer connection installed in the public way of Main Street to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the sewage district. Two, both buildings be kept accessible to the fire department year round. And three, standard condition of approval number three, four, six, seven, eight and nine. Regarding the required AutoCAD submission, signed recorded plat inspection escrow, pre-construction meeting, timing of landscaping and alteration of plans respectively.
Motion to accept.
Second, Jack.
And a roll call, roll.
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenny.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Hey, good luck.
Great. Thank you so much, we look forward to bringing you to the city.
Okay, have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, Beth, are you ready for the next one?
Yes, and I'm back.
She's back, okay.
Yahoo. Um, okay, so the next item, or introduce the next item, let me, um, on the agenda and then I will be happy to, um, introduce the project.
Yes, this is for new business file, RA thirteen dash eleven, this is Gorm Sand and Gravel. This is the Libby pit, major site plan and middle extraction, uh, this is care of Craig Burgess and Sabeego Techniques. And go ahead, Beth.
Okay, so, um, let me, I'm trying to catch up with you guys, I still have one. No, wrong one. Okay, so, uh, this is a request for a new five-year period permit for the Gorm Sand and Gravel, um. Uh, pit that is located on Burnier Road, um, uh, this, uh, project, um, uh. Was reviewed by the site plan review committee yesterday, um, and while they made, um. A signi- a recommendation for approval with a significant number of conditions, um, the conditions are in large part, um. Warding related and, um, the applicant, uh, and staff are confident that they will be able to, um. Uh, comply with those conditions, so the recommendation is for approval.
Okay, and we'll open the public hearing, uh, does the applicant want to speak to the planning board?
I think Craig Burgess is here to present the application.
Sorry about that, forgot to unmute. Craig Burgess, I work with Sabeego Techniques here tonight, representing Gorm Sand and Gravel. I believe that some of the planning board members were having part of the previous permitting process on the site. It's the second recertification of this gravel pit. That's actually located from the, from Alfred. On Jordan Spring Road, the site was originally approved in two thousand and seven. It was recertified in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen, so this is the third recertification that's due every five years. We're going through the major site plan, we've addressed many of the items, um. So tonight we're looking for planning board approval of the project with the conditions that Beth has laid out. We would like to, i- if we can get approval tonight, we would like that the, the five, the next five years starts. When this next one, when this next process ends, which I believe is end of August. So if the five-year could start at that point, that would be greatly appreciated. I'm here tonight to answer any other questions that you may have on the project. Um, the de- the plans detail where. This, the site has been excavated over the last five years and the narratives outline where the applicant intends to, to grow the pit. So, again, Craig Burgess with Sabeego Techniques and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, thanks.
Okay, um, I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application. Uh, you can use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Let us know that you're here. Yep, is anybody opposed to the application? Uh, you're welcome to make a comment. Hey, any comments either for or against the application, just general comments? Anybody from the public want to express their opinion on this project? Okay, not hearing any comment, um, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Um, any questions and comments on the planning board? Hey, I'll go with one, is Dave Parent is with us tonight?
I am.
Um, are your concerns satisfied with respect to material storage and the proximity to the, uh, the city's water supply?
Yeah, if, if I can take just, just a couple of minutes to explain that, Lenny.
Sure.
Um, so what Gorm Sand and Gravel did is they chose a new consultant. I, I think it was a good thing that they did that, uh, Sabeego Tech has put together a, a good plan set. And a, a good submitter overall, and they've been great to work with. But what happened is in the translation of the old plans to the new plans, some things were changed. And I don't, I don't even know if that was at the direction of Gorm Sand and Gravel, I don't think it was. So I had a conversation before the site plan meeting with Craig Burgess and, and with Mark Curtis from Gorm Sand and Gravel. And Mark reiterated that he's not looking to do anything different, um, so. They're, they're very willing to make the changes we're asking for, we do have, I do have one area of concern. And they're, they're gonna address that to our satisfaction, um. They are looking to simplify a process to moving around in the pit, which Beth is gonna work with them on. Uh, this, this has just gone very, very well, I'm, I'm fully confident that, that they'll be able to address all our concerns. My, uh, comments were rather long and I think I apologized for them at the beginning. Um, it, most of the, most of the issues were changes of, of consistency. Um, and it was because they switched consultants, I don't know if you remember the last plan. But there was a single site plan that had a lot on it. And they busted that out into three sheets, so it's a lot more understandable, little easier to follow. Um, they did need to add some clarity, which we asked for. The stockpiles of materials was, was flat out a mislabeling by, by the consultant. Um, those materials shown as loom, where we don't want loom, are not loom. They are in fact aggregates that are native to the pit, we have no problem with that. So they just need to change some symbology and, uh, and that will fix that issue. But no, they, they've been very good to work with and, uh, and I think we're getting there in record time. And, uh, and that's just a testament to, uh, to how, how well they have been worked with.
Yeah, sounds good.
Lenny, if I could build off what Dave just said, there is one change that we are requesting. Um, and that is that they be allowed, uh, to go through a, uh. They're asking to be able to move to other cells in the, uh, pit. And although they're proposing to not increase the open acreage, so in order to do that, they would have to close a course, reclaim. To a ninety percent revegetation standard, uh, some other portion of the pit in order to open up more area. Um, and so what's being proposed, and I ha- I am comfortable with this, um, as I believe Davis. Um, that, uh, that they could do that with a staff level approval. Um, and pretty much what we would be looking at is to just ensure that there is the ninety percent revegetation. Um, and then that would allow them to go forward and do, um, some additional work.
So basically ninety percent revegetation and then they can move on to a different area.
Well, if they want to move on to another area, they have to re- revegetate enough to make sure there's no additional acreage open. It'll be a different acreage and different portion of the parcel, but there would be no open area that would exceed what the limit is on the pit.
Right. Okay. Um, Jack, you were at the site plan view committee meeting, did you have anything to offer to them?
No, it seemed like everything went really well, um, compared to what happened, I guess, five years ago, it was really. Not very, was painless.
So, so I, I have one question, uh, there was a comment about getting the approval to go through five years from August. Um, I'm not sure where that's coming from, doesn't the current permit expire, or expired yesterday? Which means it would really be five years from the approval, right?
No.
I guess I'm not sure where the August date was coming from.
Yeah, if, if in fact you are gonna be consistent with what you've done in the past, it would date from the expiration of their permit. They would not be given an additional couple of months on that permit.
That's probably a good point to stress, um. From Sabeego Techniques, are, are you guys okay with that, do you understand what's being, what's being, uh, proposed here?
I, I do understand, um. It, uh, you, Gorm Sand and Gravel engaged Sabeego Techniques early on back in January, just because we didn't understand at that time how long the process would be. Um, if it went anything like the last time around, it would have gone a lot longer through August, so. That's why I put that request out there, only because I understand that we're getting the potential approval tonight. I was just hoping to, uh, start that five years when the actual permit or when that five years expired. But if that's not possible, then, then I, I do understand.
Okay, someone, is Mr. Shaw here from, uh, the gravel pit?
Hi, yeah, Darren Shaw here, can you hear me?
Yes, we, yes, we can, are you okay with the, uh, the, uh, new period starting tonight?
Yes, we're fine with that, that's not a hill we're willing to die on, so if you guys are willing to do that with, uh, just tonight, we're fine with that.
Okay. Very good. Um, any questions from Oliver? Oh, hi, baby. Good, uh, Crystal?
No, I don't have any at this time, thank you.
Okay, yeah, my observation is, this is, uh, this is very smooth, this is, uh, kind of a pleasure to look at, actually. I'm good, I don't have any additional questions. I'm good, Beth.
Okay. Are you ready to go through the findings?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Alrighty. There's a lot of them, guys, sorry.
All in groups, I hope.
Not that many more votes than what you just went through with the last one, but there's, there's a lot. Uh, so the first category is the not applicable, two eighty dash fifteen dash one point three point five. So the first category is the not applicable, 280-15-1.3.5, excuse me, tanks. 280-15-1.3.6 outdoor storage of hazardous materials. 280-15-1.3.8 floor drains. 280-15-1.4.3 areas not served by public sewer. 280-15-6.3.3 lagooning. 280-15-6.3.5 fill not restrict waterways. 280-15-6.3.6 stabilized cut and fill regarding the waterways. 280-15-6.3.7 below grade excavation. 280-15-6.4.6 temporary or permanent drainage. 280-15-7.5 pedestrian circulation. 280-16-7.13 exterior lighting. 280-16-7.16 shoreline relationship. 280-16-7.18 technical and financial capacity. 280-16-7.19 airport encroachment.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Are we ready with the vote?
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare.
Yep.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Next category is hazardous materials, 280-15-1.3.1. Where hazardous materials are stored, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that based on the applicant's spill prevention plan, an indication that there will be no fuel storage on site. The standard is met. Hold on a second. 280-15-1.3.2 areas for loading and unloading hazardous and polluting materials shall be designed to prevent spills and discharges to waters and wetlands. The same recommendation and the same explanation. 280-15-1.3.3 design facilities so all hazardous materials are contained on site. The same recommendation and explanation. 280-15-1.3.4 secondary containment where hazardous materials should be provided. Same explanation, excuse me, same recommendation and explanation. And the last one in this category is 280-15-1.3.7 discharge of fluids for motor vehicle. And the same recommendation, slightly different explanation, no, actually it is the same explanation.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
So the next category is stormwater and filling related standards, 280-15-1.4.1 the volume and quality of recharge. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that it shall not increase level of contaminants entering groundwater because the slopes shall not be allowed to be over excavated. And offsite materials including asphalt and concrete, which are prohibited in drinking water protection districts, shall not be used to rebuild these slopes or otherwise be brought onto the site for storage and processing. Only onsite soils with similar chemical and physical composition to those materials that were removed shall be used to rebuild slopes and low areas. The second is 280-15-1.4.2 stormwater shall not increase level of contaminants entering groundwater. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that it shall not increase levels of contaminant entering groundwater because the pit will be internally drained. Applicants employees are trained to handle hazardous materials and it is in the self-interest of the applicant to ensure that imported materials will not contaminate the groundwater. The next one is 280-15-6.3.2 methods to trap sediment. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the proposal provides adequate methods to trap sediment on the site. The next one is 280-15-6.3.4 the extent and type of fill shall be appropriate. Recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that with the condition that the extent and amount of needed fill is documented and the fill will be sourced from onsite materials of similar chemical and physical composition as that removed. No new slopes shall be over excavated and offsite materials including asphalt and concrete, which are prohibited in drinking water protection districts, shall not be used to rebuild those slopes or otherwise be brought onto the site for storage and processing. This standard shall be met. The next one is 280-16-7.6 stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for disposal of stormwater without damage to streets, adjacent properties or downstream properties. Hold on, I'm wondering if I missed one. I missed one. 280-15-6.4.1 methods of removal or processing. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. And the explanation is that with the condition that the extent and amount of fit needed fill is documented and the fill will be sourced from onsite materials of similar chemical and physical composition as that removed. No new slopes shall be over excavated and offsite materials including asphalt and concrete, which are prohibited in drinking water protection districts, shall not be used to rebuild those slopes or otherwise be brought onto the site for storage and processing. This standard shall be met. The next one is 280-16-7.7 erosion control. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for erosion control. The next one is 280-16-7.12 groundwater. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is the project is approved will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater because it will not over excavate slopes or import materials to fill, rebuild them or for use them for storage or processing onsite.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is in the reclamation category. The first is 280-15-6.3.1 ground cover. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is the applicant will establish permanent ground cover at the end of extraction operations intended to, and the intention is to establish a hayfield. The second is 280-15-6.3.12 the suitable plan for reclamation. The recommendation is the standard is met with condition. The explanation is with the revised reclamation plan clarifying the methodology for calculating a 90% catch for revegetation and ensuring that the standard is met prior to opening up new areas of the pit, the standard shall be met. That's it.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next category has to do with the line sharing agreement, 280-15-6.3.8 below grade, no below grade excavations within 50 feet of a lot line. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is the applicant has a valid line sharing agreement for excavation within 50 feet of a lot line with the adjacent property. The next one is 280-15-6.3.10 adjacent lot lines of one or more owners shall be exempt if they agree in writing. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has a valid line sharing agreement for excavation within 50 feet of a lot line with the adjacent property. That's it for that one.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion is approved five to zero with two absences.
So the next category is neighbor, neighbor impacts. The first is 280-15-6.4.2 hours of operation. Recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is with the specifications about operating hours and days and the operation manual, impacts on neighbors will be managed and this standard shall be met. Next one is 280-15-6.4.7 disposition of brush and slash. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is the site plans and operations manual adequately addresses standard. And the last in this category is 280-15-6.4.8 cleaning, repair and/or resurfacing of streets. The recommendation is the standard is met and the explanation is the site plans and operations manual adequately addresses standard.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next is use of the site. The first is 280-16-7.1 utilization of the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is with no over excavation of slope, importation of offsite materials to fill, rebuild slopes or for storage and processing. Finalization and implementation of a remediation plan to fill an area excavated into the required five foot upper above the seasonal high water table and placement and management, excuse me, placement and maintenance of flags marking the boundaries of excavation and of sensitive natural areas while recognizing that some impacts of a gravel pit are unavoidable, this standard shall be met. The second is 280-16-7.11 natural features. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The landscape will be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical, recognizing that the site is a gravel pit.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next is routes of travel, 280-15-6.4.4 routes for transporting materials. The recommendation is the standard is met with condition. The explanation is the hall road provides an adequate route for transporting materials. No company vehicles will use vernier road to access or leave the site. The second is 280-16-7.2 access to the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that Route 4 has adequate capacity to accommodate, to accommodate traffic generated and proposed projects will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
Move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
So we're down to the singles now. The first is 280-15-6.3.1. Hold on. There it is. Excavations below the high water table. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that excavation will not extend more than five feet above the high water table as defined by a lowering of the pit floor contour by one foot from the 2011 plan. The groundwater monitoring plan shall be revised to conform with this requirement.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-15-6.3.9 the size of cuts, spills or channels along public roads or lot line shall not exceed a slope of two to one. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that the proposal shall not over excavate slopes to exceed two and a half, excuse me, two and a half to one. Sorry about that.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-15-6.4.3 type and location of temporary structures. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that with the location and operation of crushing, screening and refueling activities as described in the site plans, operations manual and SPCC plan, this standard shall be met.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-15-6.4.5 the area and depth of excavation. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition requiring an annual third party inspection to verify approved area and depth of excavation, this standard shall be met.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-16-7.3 access into the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that access into the site will be safe and convenient, provides minimum required site distance, is located to avoid conflicts with turning movement and traffic flow and meets maximum grade and will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Next one is 280-16-7.4 internal vehicular circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the proposal will provide the safe movement of emergency vehicles on site, will provide the safe and convenient circulation of vehicles and will prohibit vehicles from backing out onto Route 4.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-16-7.8 water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that adequate provisions will be made for water supply.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-16-7.9 sewage disposal. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the septic system is outside of the wellhead area.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Hoare?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is 280-16-7.10 utilities. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that utilities are currently provided.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen waste disposal. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that the proposal provides for adequate disposal of solid and hazardous waste.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Thomas Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven fifteen landscaping. The recommendation is that the standard is met with conditions. The explanation is with revised reclamation, reclamation plan clarifying the methodology for calculating a ninety percent catch for revegetation. And ensuring that the standard is met prior to opening up new areas of the pit, this standard shall be met.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Uh, the last one is two eighty dash. Hold on. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen technical and financial capacity. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to carry out the project in accordance with the city code and the plan.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
You sure that's all there?
Oh, yeah. Are you ready for a draft motion?
Absolutely.
Site plan review, oh, hold on. Sorry, I didn't correct this. The planning board accepts the information in the May twenty seven, twenty twenty one summary report. And June first, twenty twenty one site plan review committee recommendation. Grant requested waivers and fines that the proposed major site plan application file R thirteen dash eleven for a new five year permit. It extends until June first, twenty twenty six. In order to continue mineral extraction and material processing on a hundred and sixty six acres located off Burnier Road. With a haul road that travels through the property to Route Four in Alfred's. Has satisfied and has satisfied the standards in chapter two eighty zoning, including but not limited to article sixteen. Subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By June one, by June twenty third, twenty twenty one, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning. With a revised plans and documents. To the planning department that adequately responds to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A to add acreage of open excavation stockpiles, processing paved haul road, unpaved haul road and reclaimed areas. That meet the requirement for ninety percent vegetated cover to the site plan. B clarify total amount of requested open area, which meets Sanford's definition on site plan and in relevant areas of the operation manual. C correct labeling of and distinguished stockpile areas for loam and other materials and ensure that restricted materials are not proposed to be located in wellhead zone. D clarify that loam will only be processed in the area of cell five where it was allowed under the current permit in the operations manual. Note sixteen on sheet one correctly covers this item. Section A, condition nine B of the operation manual needs to be consistent with the site plan. E evaluate groundwater contours to determine if they need to be adjusted due to observations of groundwater monitoring over the past five years. Add groundwater contours to the site and reclamation plans. F revise clarify grading in the previously reclaimed areas and verify whether these areas are proposed to be, um, uh. I'm sorry, the applicant did indicate they will not be reopening those areas. Um, so I think we can simply have F to be revised clarified grading in the previously reclaimed areas. G revise notes twelve and seventeen on sheets one of four based on staff comments. H revise note two on sheet two of four and adjust relevant language in the operation manual based on staff comments. I provide additional spot raise on the pit floor to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the Sanford Water District. J clearly define the low area located approximately six hundred feet along the easterly slope of the site plan. And describe how much fill will be required to restore the required five foot buffer. And add a section to the operations manual to describe how and when the low area will be filled with soils of similar chemical and physical composition. To the satisfaction of the assistant city engineer and the superintendent of the Sanford Water District. K, uh, and I believe that should also be and the director of code enforcement. Uh, K to revise erosion control notes E one D, E one H V, E two D C and E three C based on staff comments. L to revise the operation manual section A, condition seven, eight, nine, B and eleven based on staff comments. Revised section B, conditions one, seven, eleven. Revised section C, conditions eight, based on staff comments. M to provide a table with historic water level measurements and water quality monitoring laboratory results to the satisfaction of the superintendent of the water district. Simply providing copies of the city annual groundwater monitoring reports would accomplish this. Two to clarify the proposed revision of the hydrologic assessment referenced in the application packet. Three to clarify that over excavation of slopes continues to be prohibited. Proposed changes are not consistent on this throughout the submittal. Four to return to the city for staff level review and approval to verify reclamation to ninety percent vegetated standard. Prior to opening up a corresponding amount of new acreage. Five, once the proposed, excuse me, once the amount of approved open area is finalized, provide the city engineer with one signed original. And two additional hard copies of a performance guarantee in the amount he establishes. Six to establish an eight hundred and fifty dollar inspection escrow with the code enforcement department to cover the cost of an annual third party inspection. Seven, standard condition of approval, seven, eight and nine regarding the required pre-construction meeting, timing of landscaping and alteration of plans respectively.
Motion to accept.
I'm sorry.
I heard Tom first. I heard Tom first, so. We had, do we have a second?
Second, Oliver.
Okay, so Tom and Oliver. And we're ready for a vote.
Oliver Jones?
Yes.
Jack McAdam?
Yes.
Tom Morgan?
Yes.
Crystal Tenny?
Yes.
And Lenny Horne?
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Okay. You guys are all set.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Have a good one, guys.
Bye.
Okay, are we ready for number four?
Yeah, in just a second, I will be. Okay.
Just want to make sure, do we have, do we have both parties present for the next, for the next application?
No, and in fact, uh, that is something that I will bring you up to speed on in just one moment. Um. Oh, man, where are we? I'm sorry. I got too many piles open in front of me. Okay, um, hold on. I'm just gonna go to paper. Give me a second. Alrighty, so, um. I'm gonna spend more time setting this up than I have the others. Um, so the first thing I, I, I guess I'm gonna start by saying that the applicant. Which is North Bay Coffee, Coffee LLC, um, is requesting amended major site plan approval. For the Aroma Joe's site plan, uh, down at forty two Jagger Mill Road. Um, what they are proposing to do and in fact have already done, um, in part. Is to install a second freestanding crash bar on the opposite side of the drive through. Uh, prior to entering the queue for the ordering window. There is one currently on the exit after you come out. Uh, of the pickup. Um, three caution signs basically warning people about these height limitations. One will be on the building. Um, and there will be yellow reflective tape on the awning of the property that's owned by, uh, forty two Jagger Mill Road LLC. So, um, I want to give you some background on this. Um, so the major site plan for Aroma Joe's was approved by the planning board. In May of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, there was a minor amendment approved in, um, at a staff level, um, in, uh, July of two thousand and eighteen. To replace and supplement landscaping along Main Street frontage of the parcel that had been required as part of the site plan. Before Aroma Joe's proposed the site plan, uh, but they took it upon themselves to address the fact that there was non-compliance with that site plan. Because some of those trees had been taken down, some of them were in terrible shape, and originally they had been planted in the wrong location. Which was part of the reason why they didn't survive in part. So. Since the applicant has constructed the facility three and a half years ago. Um, the awning has been hit or damaged four to five times by box trucks, despite the fact that there were clear, um. Designations about height limitation. Um, and, um. So that was the reason why, um, uh, North Bay Coffee, um, which replaced Aroma Joe's LLC. Um, was able to, uh, excuse me, was, is coming forward with this proposal. So as we started to review this, the property owner Elias Facilli, um, came forward. And in his, he operates under the name of forty two Jagger Mill Road LLC, came forward and basically said. Um, these guys don't have my permission to do this and, um, the lease makes it perfectly clear that they have to get my permission before they can submit this. Um, up to that point, um, this would be a plain vanilla staff level review, um, to basically take care of what I would call maintenance. Issues and to improve safety within the parking lot. Um, nothing terribly substantive. Uh, really a very minor adjustment to make significant safety improvements. Um, at that point in time, um, I, uh, knowing that we had opposition coming from, um, the landowner. Um, this actually was something that would have been able to be reviewed by the code enforcement director, um, under the staff level review provisions. Cause it's less than five hundred square feet that are gonna be impacted. Jamie bumped, bumped it up to me as is allowed in the ordinance. Um, once I talked with the property owner and he made it clear that he was going to, um. He was going to fight this, potentially appeal this decision. As you'll remember, staff level reviews, when they're appealed, they go to the planning board. And the planning board conducts the review itself independent of what staff might have done. Um. At that point, um, either party, either the applicant or the, um, the property owner. Can appeal the planning board's decision to superior court and that is the appropriate process of review and resolution of the conflict. The alternative resolution of the conflict is that the property owner, uh, bring, uh, his tenant, uh, to court. To actually challenge the provisions associated with the, uh, the lease agreement. But that's a matter between two private parties and the city does not need to get itself embroiled in that. So, um. When, uh, Elias made it clear that he was going to appeal or fight this decision, um. Um, I just made the decision. I talked to Lenny. We got, we agreed that this should be bounced up to the planning board level. Um, I have had consultation with the city's attorney about this, uh, all the way along here. Um, uh. After I shared the, so Elias did provide a complaint that was included in your packet. Um, I shared the complaint with the applicant, um, and his, it's attorney Brad Moran. Brad is here this evening, as is Lauren Goodrich. Um, who represents, um, North Bay Coffee. Um, and you can speak directly to them about this. But the crux of the, uh, property owner's complaint, um, is that, uh, that the tenant needs to get permission to submit this amendment. Um, a straight face read, um, um, I'm not an attorney, you're not attorney. Um, a straight face read of the terms of the lease, uh, does suggest, um, a right of refusal, if you will, for the owner. Uh, but it makes sense that that was applied at the site plan review la, stage and that it, it's really inappropriate. To withhold and even within the language of the lease, you'll see that unreasonably withholding permission, um, is not to be allowed. So it's up to a judge really to decide whether, you know, how to interpret those clauses. Um. Uh, so it's up to you to inter, to do face level interpretation of the lease agreement for one sole purpose. And that is to determine whether the applicant has adequate right title or interest to pursue this application. Um, I, I know that, uh, the applicant's attorney has also prepared, uh, some material for you and it's in your packet. He's here this evening. I think he also wants to talk about this. Um, uh. My recommendation is that you act on this this evening and that you recommend this, uh, and that you do approve this. Um, and I do have a motion if and, and findings if and when you're ready to go in that direction. So the piece that I said I was going to tell you about. So at, uh, two fifty this afternoon, I received an email, uh, from Elias Facilli. Good afternoon, spectrum internet service is out on my street. It will not be repaired until three P M Thursday. The landlord's rep, I, he's referring to himself in the third person here. Uh, will not attend the planning board meeting this evening, given we have no internet service for the record. The landlord does not consent to the amendment. I have no doubt you will approve the amendment. The landlord will address this issue in superior court. Thank you. Um, I did, uh, send an email back and, uh, to Elias as soon as I got it. Uh, I was in a meeting until. I don't know, it was quarter four, I think it was, something like that. I sent an email back to him immediately and I did tell him that in fact he could. Um, access the, um, meeting directly through his iPhone and if he didn't have an iPhone, that he could access the audio portion of the meeting. Through a regular cellphone or a landline. Um, I did not get any response. Um. That's all I have to say on this subject most of the time.
All right. Um, we'll just introduce this here. This is new business file R eighteen dash fifteen A. This is for Aroma Joe's major site plan, here of Lauren Goodrich. And this is for the property located at forty two Jagger Mill Road in Sanford. And I will declare the public hearing open, um. I don't know who wants to go first.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public, I thought we were doing a public hearing on this.
Nope.
So out of the three applications, four applications, there was just one that was no public hearing. Okay, so we will, okay, we'll dispense with that. We'll, um, have an open statement, I guess, from, uh, I'm not sure which party wants to go first, either the applicant. If you want to go first, um, go ahead. You have up to twenty minutes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm Brad Moran. I'm an attorney here in town. I represent North Bay Coffee. Here with, uh, Lauren Goodrich and Marina Chulias Kuskaia, who's, uh, they are the partners in, uh, the Aroma Joe's. Uh, uh, franchise in South Sanford. Would like to apologize that we're coming to you with kind of a small matter here and it seems like some of our private, uh, stuff has caused us to escalate to your level. Uh, but really what we're looking for is something very minor. Uh, it's really not much of a change at all from the existing plan. Um, but can I share, if I can share my screen? I mean, this, if I'm sharing the screen, everyone can see this. This is basically it here. We have, um, a couple of safety signs. And, um, a, a crash bar. Basically, uh, to prevent the vehicles from hitting the kiosk. Uh, I mean, my clients can speak directly. Uh, I mean, my clients can speak directly more to the specifics about that, but that's all that this was, we were hoping that it could just be reviewed and approved at the staff level and not have to involve the planning board. Um, basically, the, uh, issues with the landlord really had nothing to do with this either, there's just kind of a long-running dispute, uh, uh, that has nothing to do with this, that kind of bled over into this, um, objections being, uh, made to the staff approving this minor amendment. Um, I, uh, I did, there's something in writing, uh, to address, I guess, just some legal issues. One, whether we have standing to seek a permit. Here we believe we absolutely do, um, the, uh, city had approved this before, uh, for, uh, for the previous tenant. Um, we have a recorded lease, recorded assignment. Uh, this is a fifty pound leak, my client actually owns the building, um, uh, and erected this building. There are provisions in the lease that give, uh, the tenant the ability to build this out, make improvements. Um, Mr. Basile has complained that there's a section of the lease saying he had to approve the plans, that's talking about the site plan that took place a number of years ago. Um, and even there, it said his consent did not be unreasonably withheld. Um, withholding consent to simple safety signage, I would argue, definition of reasonable. Um, but I, as Beth said, I believe that's nothing that the city planning board needs to get into. If he believes he had a strong case there, he could literally take us to court on that private lease amount. The only question here is whether we have a stand, whether we have standing to seek it, and then whether it meets the approval criteria. Your board has already found everything up there, met the approval criteria. This doesn't detract from any of that, if anything, it does. Um, the, uh, I think that's pretty much all the major points I wanted to hit. I did wanna turn it over to my clients, they can just explain, just from their experience, why they're asking for this and why it's really important.
Brad, thank you. First of all, we need to practice you saying my last name, uh, but that's probably not in this meeting. Uh, my name, my name is Marina. I'm a current business partner on that particular location in, um, St. Paul, Sanford, and I actually tried to practice, this is probably one of my first board meetings, I wanted to address everybody as, uh, as it's appropriate, ladies, gentlemen, and lord here. Looks like that's inappropriate, uh, way to address everybody here. Uh, as I told you, my name is Marina, and I've been with the company in many different roles, but in the last couple of years, South Sanford Aroma Joe's had many accidents. And if you think about awning, right, I know you, I'm the only foreigner probably here, but awning is something that goes over the window, right, to protect you from the rain. We had multiple incidents of, uh, school bus hitting the awning, so it's too tall, so when it's going under, it's hitting the bar but not stopping, going forward and hitting down. We also had a truck carrying a horse hitting it too. I know you all worried, the horse is okay, um, the trailer's wrong, uh, the same as our awning. So four or five times this awning has been hit. I correctly worked with Elias on fixing this issue. And as you're probably all aware, doing same, same old, same old is not the solution here, meaning just simply replacing, repairing the awning. So what I've done, I went to the signage company and asked them to survey the site and come up with a solution for us of what we can do. They come up with a sketch that was shared with Elias directly, and this was mostly like a courtesy gesture, just to tell him what's happening, uh, uh, with our bus, business and how we're trying to protect our own building. Uh, he did tell me that he approves only the awning. And then that particular moment, we start kind of, uh, having a conversation about the ownership of the building, and we honestly don't need a permission to improve and protect our own asset. And that's where we ended up here today, um, to present this case to you and say that the only thing we're trying to do here, in the simple English, we just installed the bar to prevent the, 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 the call of vehicles hitting our building. And we're asking your support here to let us do that, so it does not happen again, it does not damage the building, but the most scariest part is could damage our customers and our employees. The same that is all I have in here, thank you. Lauren, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add. And I should tell you, you're muted, but it's twenty-two, twenty-one.
I got it, I got it, I got it, guys, thank you. Hi, Lauren Goodrich here, um, founder and CEO of Aroma Joe's Coffee Franchising, um, been involved in South Sanford from the beginning. Again, I wanna, I would, as Brad said, I wanna apologize for letting this trivial matter between two business people get to this level and never should've got here. But Marina pretty much covered it, um, covered everything that, that we wanted to discuss. Um, I'm sure, you know, this is gonna go further than this board, but we're trying to take the appropriate steps in a professional manner. And again, I thank you all for your time this evening, this late evening. Um, open to any questions that you might have.
Okay. Um, are you guys all set? Is there anything else that you wanted to offer on behalf of the applicant?
If there's a question regarding any specific section of the lease, I can point them out. Uh, the representations I made, uh, about the ownership of the building, uh, improvements, the plans, all those stuff can be found in the document I submitted to the planning board, so I made it part of the record.
Okay. Um, and Beth, you said there was somebody here on behalf of the business owner, the, uh, building owner? There's nobody?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, you might wanna ask that directly to the folks in the audience, but I'm not seeing any names that jump out at me.
I'm seeing a phone number at the bottom of the screen, but is that you, Beth?
Uh, I don't know, is it six, seven, one? Yeah, that's me.
That's you, okay, so there's nobody else here. Okay, all right, then I'll open up for a discussion of the planning board. Any comments, questions?
Let's go to the finding of facts.
Okay, well, let's make sure there's no other car, questions or comments for us.
Uh, I have one question, uh, I'm just curious, did the landowner, uh, have these also solutions? It's a problem? We have offered to meet with Mr. Basile, um, numerous times. Uh, this, I, I put it in, in the letter, this dispute actually really started with monetary issues, really didn't have anything to do with this, and then it quickly escalated. We've been, we've been getting flooded with com, like lawsuits, complaints that look like lawsuits, but they haven't actually been filed with the court. There was one naming the city, there was one naming one of our vendors, there was one naming one of our banks, um, that we've just been getting. Uh, so we, we have made many, many efforts to, uh, I personally have spoken with Mr. Basile, Lauren has, Marina has, we've attempted to arrange meetings. Uh, we're dealing with, um, uh, kind of a flurry of activity that's taken place over the past, I would say, six months, Lauren, I think.
His, his comment when the final plan, when Marina.
January twenty-sixth.
Final plan to him was, um, you know, you can repair the awning, but this quote is stupid from your signage. That's all he offered.
Thank you.
Jack, you're all set? Um, anything from Crystal? No, Tom?
I'm all set.
Okay, and I'm good. So I guess, Beth, um, disappointed to see we're not hearing from both sides, but I guess we're ready to move on.
Okay, um, so this is gonna actually be very simple, three votes. Um, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take all of the ones that are the same first. So two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one, utilization of the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, access to the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three, access into the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five, pedestrian circulation, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six, stormwater management, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven, erosion control, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight, water supply, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine, sewage disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten, utilities, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven, natural features, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve, groundwater protection, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen, exterior lighting, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen, solid waste disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen, landscaping, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen, shoreland relationship, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen, technical and financial capacity, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen, buffering, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven, excuse me, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen, and airport encroachment. In all cases, the recommendation is that the standard has been met, and the explanation is that there is no change from the approved site plan.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Okay, we're ready for the vote.
Oliver Jones. We can't hear. Uh.
With Oliver.
Yes. Jack McAdam. Yeah, he said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Horr.
Yes.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Then there's two separate votes. The first is on two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four, internal vehicular circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met, and the explanation is that placement of three signs and a second freestanding crash bar improves safety associated with internal circulation.
Motion to accept.
Second, Jack.
We'll move to a vote, Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Horr.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absences.
Then the last standard is right title or interest, and the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is the submitted lease demonstrates adequate right title and interest to seek amended site plan approval.
Motion to accept. Second, Oliver.
We'll move to a vote, Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Thomas Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Horr.
Yes.
The motion passes with five to zero and two absences.
Okay, would you like a draft motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The planning board accepts the information in the May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one summary report and finds that the application file R eighteen dash fifteen A, tax map R eighteen, lot fifteen A, to install a second freestanding crash bar, three caution signs, one on the building, and yellow reflective tape on the awning on property owned by forty-two Jagger Mill Road LLC, grants approval of the amended major site plan and authorizes the issuance of a building permit subject to the following conditions. One, by June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of the final approved amended site plan. Um, and if there are no changes here, uh, Lauren, then we already have three originals, so we would only need two more.
Great.
The second is the standard condition of approval number nine regarding altering approved plans. And I can actually read you that one if you give me just a moment. Uh, that's the one that says the approval is dependent on and limited to the documents and plans contained in the, in the application submitted, and then it goes on for another eight or nine lines. Um, so that's the draft motion.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and a vote?
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Horr.
Yes.
So the motion passes with five to zero and two absences.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much, uh, ladies and gentlemen, really appreciate your time this evening again. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, have a good night. Okay, the last three items on our agenda, the Midtown Mall, Dana Ventures, and Coastal Oaks will all stay on the table, they are not ready to go yet. And that brings us to the planning director's report.
Well, that's, uh, actually, that statement that Lenny made is relevant to the one thing that I would like to discuss with you. Um, a couple of meetings back, um, the planning board discussed the site plan review committee's recommendation to provide a ninety-day let deadline for a number of applicants who had items which were tabled for several meetings. And I believe, at that point in time, there were five of them. Two of them have since completed their applications and completed their reviews and have approval. So, back, uh, when we first started talking about this, you asked me to reach out to other communities to, uh, inquire how they handled it. So I reached out to nine or ten communities to discuss the situation, and as I expected, uh, most of their strategies were tailored to their specific processes and were not directly relevant to how Sanford manages its processes. However, one planner, who I actually didn't talk to, but I, in frustration 'cause I couldn't reach people, I left a message for this planner, who I actually don't know. Um, and she returned the call and, um, and basically reminded, or, or basically triggered something in my memory. She said, "Oh, we have a deadline, uh, for action so many days after the public hearing is closed." And so I went back into our ordinance and found that two eighty dash sixteen dash six point five point two has a similar provision, and it basically says that following the public hearing, "The board shall consider the application in its conformance with site plan approval criteria and standards. And within sixty days of the close of the public hearing, the board shall complete its review and take action on the application. You can extend that review period with the consent of the applicant, but you're not obligated to do that." Um, so this provision appears to provide a path forward to address the, the remaining, uh, three items that are, uh, are still on the table. Um, in each of the cases, you did hold a public hearing and you left it open, um, with the intention of being, um, uh, fair to people who came forward and commented that they would have an opportunity to make additional comments or adjust their comments based upon the revised materials that the applicants needed to provide. Um, uh, that was our Achilles' heel, um, because the assumption was that we would get those revised materials relatively quickly, and then we would go back, you know, to finish the public hearing, close it, and then go forward with action. Um, so I wanted to tell you what's going on with the remaining three projects. The Midtown Mall, we have revised the materials, uh, we found that they met the various, uh, they addressed the various issues that were the basis of the tabling motion. Um, and they are scheduled for review at your second meeting, I believe, in June. They have to go to the design review committee, um, at the fir, you know, at their meeting the week before the planning board's meeting. So next week they'll go to design review, and the week after, they'll be ready to come back to you. Um, you will open that public hearing, take additional comment, um, and hopefully close it, and then take action. Um, eighteen Withem Street was a very small subdivision, um, uh, it's kind of crazy how we got caught in the subdivision processes. It's just basically completing a two-unit building on a foundation that's already existing. Um, and unfortunately, it is a subdivision, and the applicant had a really hard time nailing a land surveyor, uh, down, um, in a timely manner. Um, as you know, all of the development consultants are just up to their eyeballs, as are the various reviewers. Um, they have submitted revised materials to us, but they still haven't addressed a number of, I would say, technical matters. Um, some of them are administrative, but other than, others are more substantive than just administrative. Um, so it would be timely, again, to reopen and finish the public hearing and close it, um, and then start the sixty-day clock. Um, and at that point, uh, you know, if it's not completed, you can give them more time if you think they're making reasonable progress, or you can, um, you can say that's it, you can approve it the way it is, or you can deny it. Um, and if you do deny it, and the applicant doesn't appeal it, and I think they would have a hard time, um, succeeding in an appeal, um, then they would have to submit a new application in order for the project to go forward. The third one is the Dana Ventures gravel pit, um, uh, this was tabled back in November. The third one is the Dana Ventures gravel pit. Um, uh, this was tabled back in November. Um, the applicant did submit revised materials. Um, they were not adequate. We had, uh, staff had a, uh, an hour and a half meeting um, with the agent on behalf of the, uh, applicant at the beginning of April, and we have not seen revised materials since then. Um, an attorney has now been brought into the review. Um, when we communicated about two and a half weeks ago, um, I was an, trying to answer her questions that she had coming into the project late in the game. Um, and I asked her when we might expect revised materials, and she told me about two weeks. I added a day or two on to that, uh, two weeks. And that deadline, um, was yesterday. I made it clear that I was expecting the plans by yesterday. Um, I did not receive the plans. And I did not get any communication about when we could expect to receive the plans. And again, I think it would be quite appropriate to, um, uh, bring this up. Close, you know, continue the, hold the remainder of the public hearing, close it, and set that sixty-day clock. What, um, I discussed this with the planning board chair, and he was actually interested in doing that this evening, and I suggested that it would be more appropriate to delay and have it be on the next planning board agenda. That would give us adequate time to notify the applicants that this is going to happen. Um, as well as notify anybody who came forward to testify at those public hearings. And I'm pretty sure that there was at least one person on each of them. And on a couple of them, there were a couple of people. So we, we'll have to go back into the regular to, you know, pull out their names and make sure we contact them as well as the applicants to let them know that this is gonna happen if in fact you choose to do this. Um, and our recommendation is that in fact you do that. Um, that it has been way too long that these things have been languishing. And in the case of the gravel pit, their permit expired three years ago this month.
Just a comment. Just a, just a comment. As a matter of policy, I think it's the expectation that we're gonna be doing this going forward as a matter of policy, not granting open-ended, uh, approval periods or not extending the, uh, open, the, uh, keeping the hearings open.
So I think that you have a middle ground there. Um, if in fact it looks like it's, it's pretty close, um, but you really need some more information, you can, you can continue the public hearing to a specific date. So it might be a month, let's say, so two meetings out. You give them the date, that's right at the time that you have that public hearing, we are going to continue this public hearing to X, Y, Z date. That date will come up. If you don't have the material and you don't have a good reason for why that date should be extended again, that's your opportunity to then just close the public hearing and start the clock. Um, so I still think you can be flexible, but I would recommend that you do that with a bit of specificity.
And maybe just keep some of the applications from coming to us until they're actually ready to, uh, to move through the process? I don't know.
Well, we do the best we can in terms of the completeness review, but the completeness review is not a substantive review. It simply says the material's there or it's not there.
Right.
When we, when it is there, then we start it through the review process. Um, in most, in many other communities, they don't start the process. They don't start the scheduling process until after the staff comments have come in and the technical issues have been resolved.
Right.
Stanford's compressed, um, schedule or review does not allow for that. And so that's why we occasionally end up in this situation, but I, in the five and a half years I've been here, I've never seen this kind of, um, uh, delay, if you will. And it, it wasn't just in one project. I, I think probably the, the one that was tabled the least amount of time was, um, for three meetings. Um, and, uh, but the others are, are substantially longer. Um, you know? And I think, uh, when we first had this conversation, I gave you actual time periods, um, associated with how long they've been on the table. Gorm, uh, Dana Ventures was by far the longest on the table. Then followed, I don't know whether Midtown Mall and Eighteen Withem Street were competing with each other for who, you know, was the longest after that. And then after that, it was the bike path, which you've acted on now. Um, and the, uh, and then I think then we were back to that, uh, private way that was really just a month.
So I, I concur. Let's, let's, uh, give them a date, say this is the date we're closing the public hearing as mentioned. Uh, and then make sure that this is the standard going forward, that we let everybody know on the front end. Yeah, you get a shot. You know, we'll be flexible if possible, but we can't just keep opening, keep the book open for everything.
I agree with Tom with that one.
I think setting that expectation on the front end is very helpful for applicants.
I'm good. You know what I think?
So I guess what I need is a motion.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve this as, uh, as you recommended.
Oliver, a second.
So we'll move to a vote. Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yep.
So the motion passes five to zero with two absences.
So the only other thing on, um, uh, in my report is to just point out that the city council did appoint the mineral extraction task force last night. Um, Dave, please help me, um, or, uh, with the name, let's see. Christianess and Mark Curtis.
Hold me, my child. I don't.
All right, so Chris Cur-, uh, uh, Christianess and Mark Curtis, um, from the industry. Dana Peters from Water, um, Water Quality, uh, Interests, Dana Peterson. Kevin McKeon from, uh, Conservation Interests. Oh, I can't remember the name of, of. Is it, there's a resident, um.
Oh, uh, Saint Jean. Is it called Saint Jean?
Saint Jean, thank you.
Yeah, it did help.
Yep, thank you, Dave. See? Yeah, that was great. Uh, Dave Parent has been appointed. Let's see, who else is? Steve Buck is going to be the chair and the facilitator. Um, with expectation that he may draw in, um, Matthew, uh, from Venture and myself, um, as staff advisors. With the possibility they may put us on the task force at some point, but at this point, we're not, it's not being considered. Oh, I know I'm missing somebody.
Somebody's on the gravel pit industry?
Jack.
Yeah, Mark Curtis and, and Christianess.
Okay.
So no counselors are gonna be on it, as I understand it. The, the reasoning there was that the council was gonna have ample time to be engaged in this conversation both through the zoning subcommittee and the full city council when it goes to a vote at the council level. I know I'm missing a couple of people because I think there are eight people on, on the task force total. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's our, uh, Jack is going to be on it, but I think I'm still missing one person. And unfortunately, if I try to open up my email, I'm gonna blow everything out and I won't be able, I'll get kicked out of the, the meeting again, so. Um, the meeting, the first meeting is going to be on June fourteenth at six o'clock. I don't have any more information about it. Um, I will be meeting with the city manager and I should have more information um, to share with you. Um, I guess the next time we meet will be two days after the task force meeting, but I'll try to, I'll try to share with you uh, what's being sent out to the task force, just so that you have that information. Feel free to direct any comments to Jack or to me. Um, again, remember this is a, this is, you have to be careful on the communications here. Although there is no app, application in front of you. So it's not inappropriate to talk about policy in between meetings. Just remember, you don't do it with three people because then it's a formal meeting.
Oh, yeah, we do. We have Dana, we have Dana Ventures.
Right, but that's separate from, that's separate from the task force. You can't talk about the Dana Ventures application.
Okay.
Can't talk about any open application, but if you wanna talk about the ordinances and, um, your comments about, uh, gravel pit issues, uh, separate from any application, you can have that conversation. I did, you know, when, when Steve and I were originally talking, um, his thought was that basically, um, the task force would pick up where the planning board has left off. Um, and unfortunately, the appointment of the task force was delayed a, a little bit. They are not changing the deadline of action, uh, and having this in front of the city council, uh, by, or at least having it out of the planning board's hands, because remember, any amendment of the zoning ordinance, whether you're involved in the discussion at the task force level or not, has to be, um, brought to the planning board. Planning board has to hold a public hearing on it, and then it has to pass its recommendation on to the city council. And so the deadline of the end of March is, is looming very, very large, especially as we're heading into the summer months and people have vacation schedules. So I have suggested to the city manager very recently that I'm not sure that it's, it's feasible to just continue to do what the planning board was doing. If you remember correct, uh, we had something on the order of thirteen or fourteen topic areas, maybe even a bit more, fifteen or sixteen. We had made our way through five of them with, with maybe three of them that we didn't come to final resolution on, so we're gonna have to go back to that. And we were handling about two, two and a half topics per meeting. Um, and each of those meetings was taking between two to three hours um, for staff to prepare the material for those sessions. So I've suggested Steve really needs to think a little bit differently about how to approach this, to be able to get the work done and the time that's available. Clearly, the number of industry voices at the table will be reduced um, with two industry representatives. And, uh, but, but if, if they're, if they're smart and use their time well, what they'll be doing is the same thing that you might be wanting to be doing with Jack, is they're gonna be communicating directly to their representatives. And, uh, it'll, it's anybody's bet, you know, how smoothly this will go. I, I really am not holding out, um, any expectations in any direction about this. I'm simply going into it intending to be a staff person.
As long as there's no findings of facts, I'll be, I'll be happy.
Hey, Jack, I worked really hard to get those down to the number that you actually ended up voting on. You can tell I got very creative with some of the combinations. Molly, do you have anything you wanna add? Stuff that's happening? I suspect you all have had it. It's nine twenty-three.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all exhausted. I will reiterate that, yes, I, uh, have Midtown Mall scheduled on the next planning board and S P R S meeting. So that will be one old business item taken off the table. But that's all I have. We should, uh, motion.
Wish, I just had to switch to my phone because my iPad's dying.
Yeah, my phone died earlier than me, too.
Hey, we're ready for a motion to adjourn?
I heard a rumor. I heard a rumor that we may be able to meet in July in person?
Yes, I hope so.
Oh, very nice.
So there has been discussion at the council level about going back into face-to-face meetings in July. Um, I don't believe that they have made their final decision about that. Um, you're not bound to do the same thing. Um, but once we get to some clearer, more clear direction from the city manager's office or the city council, I'll bring that issue back to you.
Are we waiting for them to approve us to go back in? Or are we just waiting to see what they decide? I mean, we spent twenty minutes, fifteen, trying to deal with technical problems. You know, we wouldn't deal with that if you were in the room.
I agree with that.
I have to tell you that there's been a fair amount of conversation in, in city hall about going with a hybrid approach. Um, because there are still a lot of people who are not comfortable coming, and that, what we have found is that we've had significant increase in, um, uh, participation and viewing since, uh, the pandemic started, so. You know, I, I guess I would like to put this on the agenda for a conversation so that you can kind of dig through the various details and decide what you'd like to do. So may I suggest we put that on the, uh, the next meeting agenda for conversation?
Yes.
I was up there today for election training and they had these, I don't know, sixty-five inch TVs, three of them up there that they're meaning to use to have Zoom meetings while they're meeting in person also.
I was gonna say, there should be a way. There should be a way to accommodate both.
I think that's where people are heading.
Hybrid zone challenges.
Correct.
We, uh, I've been trying to do some hybrid meetings for work and more often than not, I will say it's either Zoom or in the room. This, the going half and half is very challenging, or both, people on the phone, hearing everything going on, and then hearing, and then just engaging with the other, but what do we have to do? Uh, you know, this, spending fifteen to twenty minutes every meeting dealing with technical problems and getting people logged in and that's twenty, it's fifteen to twenty minutes that I could be there, so.
I, I agree. I could be sleeping right now, too.
I know. I wish I was.
This was the worst meeting for technical problems that we've had.
Third at.
So, you know, in some ways, what we did the last time is we let the city council work out the bugs in the system. Um, and then the planning board, um, kind of took their lead from them. Or took the lead from them once that they had worked out a lot of the bugs in the system. That may be the way we end up with this. It, it's really amazing to see what's happening in council chambers right now. I was up there pulling out, you know, some of our planning board materials out of there. And, uh, while they were in there, it, it the, the technology that's now there is, um, staggering.
I gotta be honest with you, I think Zoom sucks.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's a lousy way to hold a meeting. I hate it. Uh, I have to be honest with you. It's not effective at all.
I mean, I don't know how others feel, but what if we were in person, but then the public was via Zoom?
Yeah.
Do like a half and half almost? I know, I'm sorry, Tom. He's like, can we just be done? You wanna be done? He does.
I think it makes sense to save this conversation for the next meeting.
Yeah, we can pick this up next time.
Absolutely. Yeah, definitely. All right, well, I third the adjourn, so.
We need to hold a vote to make this legit, right?
Let's hold it.
Yep.
John.
Who's first?
Oliver Jones.
Yes.
Jack McAdam.
Yes.
Tom Morgan.
Yes.
Crystal Tenney.
Yes.
And Lenny Hor.
Yes, good night, y'all.
Night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.